Hey everybody, boys, for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the home which stands one nation, united in the heart of this land.
Nice to see a lot of red uniforms out there. Proud of you guys. Thank you for coming out to watch. Okay, let's do a roll call shot.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Caffey-Lo. Mr. Corolo.
Here.
Mr. Snackel.
Here.
Mr. Messer.
Here.
Mr. Assitolo.
Here. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Wards of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018. And it has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, an issue of May 18, 2018. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified. And the requirements of postings have been met on May 15, 2018. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 29, 2019? Mr. Bruno, second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? And let's have another roll call again, please.
Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Caffey-Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Corolo.
Yes.
Mr. Snackel.
Yes.
Messer.
Yes.
Yes. Communications are on file in the Office of the Board Secretary. I'd like to recognize Mr. Sampson, please, for the floor to present his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Assitolo. Appreciate that. Welcome, everyone. So, we're gonna open the evening tonight with the boring our annual Team Driver Safety Banner Contest. It's something that we do every year here in the Freehold Regional High School District. And for those of you, see a lot of young faces out there in the audience who don't know, it's a program that we implement for anybody to get parking privileges on the school district site. And it's education and information for both the parent and the student. Because obviously, in the district of 11,000 teenagers, we have thousands of new drivers every year. And so we take that very, very seriously. So I'd like to call up Mr. Diaz from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction to present that award for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. And as Mr. Sampson said, this is a program that is meant to encourage our 10th grade students to be creative and design a drawing or anything along those lines that represents a message of positive behaviors when it comes to driving. Of course, we know that, you know, comes our junior year and they start getting their permits and so on. And driving is a big responsibility. And we try to do our best to educate for some parents and students as well. And as part of the Team Driver Safety Banner Competition, this is the 12th year that we've done this competition. And the winner for this year is a student from this high school, from Manalapan High School. And her name is Gianna Shimmer. So, applaud Gianna. And to commemorate your design, your creativity, and your effort, we want to present you with this commemorative flag for you to remember this. And as we explained a few seconds ago, when you come to your 12th grade year, you will have your own personal private parking spot. And this design will be flying in all of our six high schools as a flag in the parking lots. And it will be displayed in the cafeteria, so bad. So congratulations, 10th grade student.
So, that's part of the meeting. Twice a year, school districts in New Jersey are required to hold an evening where they... It used to be known as the Annual Violence and Vandalism Presentation, which really sounds terrific, doesn't it? That's the Department of Education term. They're changing that moniker this school year. And what it is designed to do is to just make sure that the public is aware of what is happening in the schools. Now, this data is self-reported. And sometimes it gets misused in the media about what that looks like. We have never put our heads in the sand about what happens in our schools. We recognize that we have 11,000 teenagers and sometimes they're gonna make mistakes. And we know that our role is to help them undo those mistakes and move them along. And to work with both the children and the parents to make sure that mistakes aren't repeated and that kids learn from them. And so, several years ago, what we started to really do during these presentations was at whatever post-school it was, really highlight some of the programs that we have in play in our high schools to mitigate poor decision-making, to help kids make better decisions. And what better way to do that than with their peers? And so tonight, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dillon, our Director of Guides and Operations momentarily. And I know that he has members of peer leadership teams from Manalapan High School here who share some of their work with the community. But, Mr. Dillon, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. As Mr. Sampson stated, in a moment, I'm going to deliver the Student Safety Data Systems Report. Before that, I'm happy to show you we have the peer leaders from Manalapan High School here. They're gonna speak to you a little bit about what they do here at Manalapan High School, namely, the ways in which they positively influence the school culture here. So, to start, I'd like to have Zach, peer leader, come up and speak to you.
Mr. Dillon, should we just come down and not to block them?
Yeah, okay.
And Oscar, thank you. Thank you for watching.
So, before we start, I'd like to first thank the Board of Education, the Central Office, and the high school administration, and Mr. Sampson for providing us with this opportunity to present to you all. I would also like to throw in a special shout-out to Mr. Sampson for four years of snow days and delayed openings. Here we go. That being said, I'm Zach Edison. This fall, I'll be attending Rutgers University.
Hi, I'm Renee Taylor, and next year I'll be attending University of Delaware.
I'm Jane Jo, and I'll be attending American College.
Hello, I'm Tyler Simek, and I'll be attending Rutgers University next year.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Durk, and I'll be going to the College of New Jersey next year.
Hi, I'm Myra Lee, and I'll be attending Monmouth University.
Hi, I'm South Sarab, I'll be attending University of North Carolina in the fall. Peer leadership has given me a chance to make new great friends, help our community, and become a better person. Peer leadership, we build the good out of others, we get the best out of people. We are a collective group of Manalapan seniors who want to make the high school the best it can be, help our community become better people.
Peer leadership is a class that we've all been looking forward to since freshman year. As freshmen, we walk through the halls and see the peer leadership shirts and know that those are people that we can go up to if we need help at any time and that they would always be there for us. Our role as peer leaders in the school is to be positive and influence the underclassmen and be role models for them as to what they should be looking forward to in their senior year. And our goal is to leave a positive mark on Manalapan High School.
So, going into freshman year is a big jump from middle school. And what comes with anything new, there's a little anxiety and insurance in me specifically. And the peer leaders hold a thing called Freshman Orientation in Break Beginnings, where they show the freshman class, with just the freshman class, how high school works and where their classes are, and how to navigate around the school. And they also answer any questions that the freshmen will have. So this really built confidence in me and helped show me how to navigate the school and how to keep myself in line in the school.
So, we went to Break Beginnings and Freshman Orientation. And I felt like I figured out how to navigate around the school. And then the first day of school came, and the sophomores, juniors, and the remainder of the senior class was there. And this place felt like a jungle. So, but, so yeah, I got lost. But, I found a peer leader in the hallway. And I remember asking him. He brought me in my class. And I remember realizing then and there that I wanted to be a peer leader. And I'm glad I've been able to do that and continue the legacy that they started.
Whenever there's any sort of opportunity to help out and give back to the community that shaped us into the people that we are, peer leaders always rise to the occasion. Whether it be volunteering at the elementary schools like Taylor Mills, or helping out at the Carly Lines Race, or hosting a super fun drunk retreat for the kids, we always do our best to make everyone feel included and make sure that everyone has a good time. And one event that personally sticks out to me is the Multiple Disabilities Dance that we hosted in March of this year. I walked into that event not knowing what to expect. And I walked out two hours later feeling proud and blessed. And that day, I know that I saw what real happiness looks like, and I'm very thankful for that.
So, peer leadership is a class that most freshmen know they want to take as a senior. And it really brings our senior class together, but also closer with the underclassmen. For example, I gave a girl a tour at Break Beginnings, and she ended up being on the dancing with me. And now she always comes to me with questions or anything that she needs. School spirit is huge at Manalapan, and peer leadership definitely plays a big role in that. And just like we do a lot for the community, we do a lot for the school here too. Just like freshman orientation, break beginnings, mix it up day, and teacher appreciation.
So, peer leadership does a lot for our school. In September, I walked into my class with 25 strangers. And we will be walking out with 24 new best friends and a teacher I can trust. But more school-wide, we do a lot of other things. We host Mix It Up Day. And our classes come up with skits to show people it's more to me than what you see. And we break through stereotypes and show the freshmen and other underclassmen to be nice to each other. We also show our teachers how grateful we are for them and teacher appreciation. We cheer them into school, host a breakfast for them, and send them out with their bags.
On behalf of the peer leaders, I would like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to be part of this amazing program that peer leadership is. After taking this class, I think I speak for all of us when I say that we're very excited for what the future holds for us as we leave high school and move on to college. We are greatly appreciative of everything that we've learned and experienced because of peer leadership. And I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Blumming and Mr. Sullivan, our two teachers. Thank you for making our senior year so amazing and for teaching us so much. We're very grateful for you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Let's have one more round of applause for our student leaders. Dr. Angelica, can you assist me with the laptop? As we bring up the Student Safety Data Systems presentation, I just wanna give some context to everyone here. Now, you're gonna see a lot of numbers in front of you. It's important to keep that in a frame of reference. So, as Mr. Sampson alluded, we have about 11,000 teenagers within the Freehold Regional High School District. And as he mentioned, sometimes they make some poor decisions. Our role is to really support them in making the best decisions they can possibly make. That being said, a lot of the numbers that you see, one, they represent our entire high school district. And when you break it down, most of them are under 1% of our student population. So I want you to think about what that means, right? 99% of our students, 99% of the time, are making the right decisions. And the peer leaders who are here tonight are just one example of a group of about 50, and in some cases, 70 clubs in our high schools that students can get involved in, again, to make those good peer relationships, to make those positive decisions. So, as we move through the slides, I'll kinda highlight them as well. As another frame of reference, you'll notice these numbers that you see tonight are from September 2018 up through December 31, 2018. So really, it's the first half of this school year. Okay, so, when reporting Student Safety Data Systems, there's some larger subgroups. You can see violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and HIBB, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I'll break those down as we move through. Just for comparison's sake, I do like to list a previous year so you can see Phase 1 of 2017, 2018 compared to the first phase of this year. I will also caution you that at any time, these numbers can go up or they can go down, right? And there's no real predictor. As Mr. Sampson said, you know, we don't bury our heads in the sand in this district. When we see an issue, we take it seriously and we address it head-on. And I can say that for all of our administration, certainly our counseling staff here, whether that's an issue with substance abuse, or a type of fight, or anything that's going to impact the culture of our high school. When looking at violence, it's broken down into four separate categories: simple assault, sexual contact, threat, and a fight. Just to kinda clarify, when we talk about a fight, that's mutual physical engagement between two or more students. So you can see the numbers there. They kinda speak for themselves. Again, whenever we have issues that you see here, those are addressed quickly with administration. Our counseling staff, our student assistance coordinators work with those students. Our peer leaders may be involved in helping to do a peer mediation. These are all things that we do, again, to help rectify situation and again, be proactive to make sure our culture is what we want it to be. This slide further breaks out the other categories. So you can see vandalism, it's broken down to damage and property, thefts and trespassing. Weapons, the status is reported two different ways, obviously possession and also assault with a weapon. You can see those numbers as well. Substance abuse, you know, I do wanna hit a few points on this. And I think, you know, even, I know we have some younger students here. And our high school district, like every high school district in the nation, is faced with the epidemic of vaping. You know, if that's a new word to you, please, I encourage you to speak to a student assistance coordinator or even just Google it tonight. But it is a thing, something that we've been combating actively. Our student assistance coordinators meet with students. We provide resources to families, not only in school, but resources that families can access outside of school. Additionally, all of our high schools as of next year will have vape detectors in the bathrooms, something you've probably seen in the news. We piloted it this year in two of our high schools with a lot of success. And we're gonna continue that in all six of our high schools next year. With that comes obviously the education piece. So it's reaching all students, making them understand that, hey, this is a substance that can be harmful to you, you know? And again, encouraging them to connect. So you heard the peer leaders earlier talk about the importance of connecting as a freshman, right? This is a large high school. But the most important thing that any student can do is get connected, whether it's a club, I see a lot of lacrosse players here tonight. You wanna get involved with those clubs, those smaller groups, and be part of that community. So again, you're making those positive decisions. I will break down the substance abuse on another slide. Just a few other notes, refusal or tamper. That was a newer category that the state brought in. So that would be when a student or parent refuses to go for a chemical screen that we mandated. It goes down as an automatic positive. And then we obviously have our student assistance coordinator meet with that family and also that student to educate them on dangers. This slide just breaks out the types of illegal substances used. So you can see at the top, really unfortunately no surprise, marijuana, THC oil, or THC vape really leads the pack. And you can see alcohol with two. All the other categories are at zero. I can tell you that a handful of those 36 are actual marijuana. The vast majority are all the vape oil, which again, is this epidemic that we as high school educators, I know middle school educators are combating. The next slide talks about harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So you can see from month to month, the cases of confirmed harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents. Again, this is something that can fluctuate. They can go up, they can go down. Obviously, any incident of harassment, intimidation, bullying that's reported to us, whether it's a parent, a student, we take very seriously. We investigate fully, and it is reported to our Board of Education. We do a lot of proactive programs in our school, whether it's bringing in a guest speaker, having peer leaders lead a group of students in smaller conversations supervised by adults, just to try to be proactive against these types of issues. This slide depicts alleged HIBB incidents. So, these are incidents that were investigated as an incident of harassment, intimidation, bullying. However, after the investigation was completed, there wasn't found to be an incident of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We are required to investigate it. It may have been found to have been an incident of the code of conduct or it could have just been something worked out for a peer mediation. So that kinda brings me to our last slide. So here are just a few of the programs available in district and also here at Manalapan High School. You can see the student assistance and counseling services that we offer. In addition to the different clubs, you'll see SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions, the Anytowners Peer Leaders, which you saw tonight, Student Council Lead for Diversity. These are all live and active clubs in our school that we have a lot of representation. We're always looking to get kids more and more involved. On top of the numerous athletics that we have here in the district. So again, you know, we're always looking to get kids involved, our counselors, our CICAs. The right slide shows you some of the education programs that we bring into the district. These people have been successful connecting with students, helping them kinda rethink and prioritize what's important. And our student assistance coordinators work with them actively as our administration. So that will conclude my report on the Student Safety Data Systems. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. So, something important to note from this, a few weeks ago, so the, you know, the press loves to get these numbers and then just print the numbers as if the sky is falling. And so they ran out some articles and it said, you know, numbers of incidents. And then we said, well, wait a minute, you have us grouped with school districts that have 500 kids in them. And 90% of them aren't even high school-aged. And so how is that appropriate? And then we asked, and this was, we asked the local patch, we said, if you run this as a percentage of population, you'll actually see Freehold Regional drops down to, I think, 180th in terms of high schools. Because it's less than 1.4% of our population in any of these incidents. And I think that too often, the media runs out and loses sight of what's actually happening in schools and loves to distort what is reported. And it was a refreshingly honest take from a reporter who actually wrote a subsequent story based off that and said, well, you know, this is how I get the numbers from the DOE, so I just ran them. And so we've had some, you know, we take it very seriously. We have a centralized process to make sure that we report every single incident. I'm sorry, when you see high schools of 2,000 students and they report four instances, they're not reporting accurately. And so it's something that's very important to us. But I think it's also easy to lose sight of the fact that it's 1.4% of the population who sometimes makes mistakes. And we know that teenagers make mistakes. Our goal here is to make sure that we have the programs, the support, and the capacity to help those kids through those mistakes and to learn from them and to grow from them and to put them on a different path than what they might have come to us on. So, we're proud of the work that we've done here. I'm gonna continue with my report if the board wants to make their way back up to the table. We won't be using the big screen any longer. So, a few other things important to note. Something that impacts us potentially, there's been a lot of talk about Senator Sweeney's proposals for regionalization and other things of that nature. So a couple of things, and I'm glad that I have a captive audience here, folks with, looks like a lot of younger kids playing lacrosse. Because according to the state, the Freehold Regional High School District is undertaxing our community, which I'm sure, we all live in New Jersey, in suburban New Jersey, we don't believe that to be true. However, it's as a result of a change in the determination of how school funding is determined in the state of New Jersey. And what's happened is property-heavy districts like Freehold Regional, the burden of financing that has been shifted to those districts. So we, our local fair share, which is what's our determination of what we should be paying, from 2009 to 2018, that should have gone up 30% if you ran the original 2009 numbers. But instead, it's gone up 68%. So what the state is saying is you can pay more. And what they've designated us as is an overfunded district. It's a very simplistic argument to a complex situation. First off, school districts in New Jersey were held flat for eight years. No one is overfunded in New Jersey. You know, if we all went eight years without any increase in take-home pay, we wouldn't say that we were overfunded, right? So, we've been contesting that. And we've been down at the State House and giving testimony, meeting with legislators, talking to our local municipal officials. The folks here at Manalapan were awesome. We went down with the town council and myself together, went to the Commissioner's office a couple of weeks back to make the case about what funding looks like here and what that negative impact could be. But so that everyone understands the scale for that, over the next six years, it's a reduction of $25 million in this district. So, we have masked it for a year. We've drained our reserves for next year. The subsequent year, if something doesn't change in the funding formula, we're looking at $6 million plus in straight reductions. That's a huge number. And so some of you may have seen some neighboring communities like Combs River, Brick, places like that, that they're starting the jettison staff this year. We're one year away from being in that same position. And when they talked about regionalization, we met with those folks and said, well, we're the largest regional high school district in the state of New Jersey. Like, use us as a model, actually. So, when you look at per pupil expenditure, so everybody has a sense of scale, right? They want to reduce us by $25 million. It cost us $3,000 less than the average per pupil expenditure for similar districts to educate our children here. $3,000 less, $25 million reduction. The math does not jive. And so, there's a number of bills that Senator Sweeney's proposed. Some of them are, we believe in, actually. The state funding of extraordinary special aid costs. One of the proposals is any student that costs more than $55,000 a year to educate, the state would fully pick up. So you have a sense of scale on that. You receive extraordinary aid funding in a district for your high need, special need students who are very expensive to educate, over $40,000 and $50,000. The state has only funded that at 56% of the allotment. So in this budget cycle, we were short at $2.6 million there. So that's $2.6 million that we were eligible for that we did not receive on top of the reduction. So we would support the state picking up those costs because they're exorbitant. The other piece to it that we would support is the census-based special education determination. And so, moving away from that. So what the state does, they pick a number based on the census, and it's 14% of the population, and that's what you receive special education funding for. But if you're proud to run really well-developed programs like we're able to do with a district of our size, that percentage is higher for us. of our size, that percentage is higher for us, so we're shorted that number as well. So those are things that we would support. Some of the other things, like regionalization into a K-12, we have 11,000 students in six high schools. We would certainly be open to expanding that, but what we've asked the state is to come and sit down with us, and Senator Sweeney's people did come out and spend a couple hours with us, and look at our economy of scale and the efficiencies that we realize. So as we move forward in looking to regionalize, I'm not sure what that means for us. We meet with our K-8 partners regularly. We have curriculum alignment meetings with them. We do try to align our calendars. For those of you that are in the K-8, you know that our calendars are largely the same. And those are some of the provisions there. But I think that for those of you who are parents with students who are coming into the system, this affects you more than folks who are in the system currently. And so I've sent out a number of communications to our populace, and it's on our website, about how you can become involved, about who to reach out to, and what it looks like to reduce $25 million in a district that is already educating students for $3,000 less per pupil than the average per pupil expenditure. It's being punished for being efficient, and it doesn't make sense for the kids who are coming up. So those are some thoughts on Senator Sweeney's bills. We are in full-on celebratory mode as we move through the end of the school year. Our athletic banquets, our academic banquets, our Hall of Fame inductions, our concerts, everything is underway. So the school in late May, the schools in late May to early June are as vibrant as they ever are with all these celebrations. So those are, there's been some wonderful opportunities to engage in the second half of the day with our students and parents. We do have an agreement on the agenda, which I think some folks have come out to hear about with the lacrosse program in Manalapan. I think the board is happy to be able to put that and move that through, and as I see a number of lacrosse jerseys and future lacrosse players, that's a good thing for all involved. So that's on the agenda, which will be voted on momentarily. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Oh, Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Sampson a question?
Absolutely, Mike.
And actually, coincidentally, it applies to Manalapan English Town, so in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, there was an article in the news transcript about Manalapan English Town K-8. And I guess due to state budget cutbacks, it was going to negatively impact extracurricular activities. And I don't remember word for word, but somebody in the newspaper on the Board of Ed had questioned, how is this going to impact the students in Manalapan and English Town when they go to apply to our magnet programs? So actually, I think this is a good one. Could you tell the parents and students here who could potentially apply to a magnet program what the future looks like if, you know, there's drastic cutbacks in extracurricular activities at Manalapan K-8?
So across the district in the magnet program applications, there's a component that asks about extracurricular activities and leadership, but that's not, the short answer is no impact. And the reason being is those are activities that could happen at any time. They're not necessarily tied just to the school. So the district is looking for students who've taken leadership roles, who have engaged in community service, who've been involved, whether it's through scouting, their church, their synagogue, things of those natures, and it's the whole student. It's not necessarily, I didn't, you know, I participated in basketball, or I did X. It really, the students have an opportunity to tell us in those program applications about themselves and the roles they've taken, you know, in a cost-neutral manner, not something that they would have had to pay for. So zero impact, and it's, in most of the magnet programs, it's not even, it's not factored because other things are factored with the involvement, but I think it's factored to like 5% of the application to begin with. But most of what students tell us is more about their individual journeys of who they are as a person and why they've taken those roles. And that's what's considered first and foremost, you know, most readily with the magnet program application. So there's no impact, and a number, I think, I believe the Marlboro K-8 has been pay-to-play for years, and there's been no impact to their magnet program application. So there's history from another K partner there to demonstrate that there has not been an impact as well, if folks were apprehensive in any way.
Thank you.
You all done there, Mr. Sampson?
Please.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, we were a little mixed with the committee reports, so let's start with curriculum and instruction, and who would like to speak about that?
Well, actually, we did not have a meeting since our last meeting. There was no committee meeting since our last meeting.
Okay, very good. Finance?
Okay. I'll talk about this, Carl. Since we had our meeting back on May 14th, and we talked about a couple of capital projects that are going on. First and foremost is the room we're sitting in right now, as obviously anybody knows there's no air conditioning in here. So we did put a bid out back in May 16th for two AC units on the roof of this building to provide air conditioning. I mean, the good news is there's no asbestos issues here, but, and we budgeted $1 million for this, but unfortunately, in tonight's meeting, we are going to vote to reject the bids because the bids came in too high. So where we go from here is that we're going to have to have some adjustments to what we're going to do to install some air conditioning here. We're going to have to go out and request bids in the next 30 days or so. So that was one capital project. With respect to Marlboro High School, we've already approved to go forward with that. We have to replace three boilers there since they've been there since the school opened in 1969. We awarded $656,000 in a contract to replace three boilers. There are some other issues there with respect to removal of the existing boilers, which we're going to have to go out and request bids for that. And then finally, with respect to capital projects, the day of our finance committee meeting, well, like any day, in the last 60 days, it raining like you wouldn't believe. And so we got to see firsthand about the lake that had formed in the parking lot back behind the central office building. So we are going to have to spend about $40,000 to pitch the parking lot to the back and add 10 parking spaces and a storm drain because it is ridiculous. As a matter of fact, to throw out garbage here, you have to set up planks to walk across the lake to get to the dumpster. So this is going to be work that's being done over the summer. Like I said, it's going to cost about $40,000, and we're going to have to go out to bid for that. But just so everybody knows, this $40,000 is likely going to come from money that we did not have to spend on snow plowing this year since it really didn't spell that much. And then we also talked about the school lunch program, the food service contract that's going to expire this year. The RFP process will go forward. It's a qualitative process. The RFP was out in the newspaper on Wednesday, May 15th. Submissions are due June 11th, and the evaluations of the bids will come in the second half of June. And at our July meeting, we'll award a contract for food service. And then just to wrap it up, the one thing that we also talked about is something that we talked about in depth at our close session tonight, and that's with respect to the lacrosse agreement, which Mr. Sampson had just talked about. We had just talked about the fact that in 2019, '20, there'll be a JV team at Manalapan to re-school. And that basically is what transpired at the finance committee meeting.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for covering that so completely diligently. We also wanted to take a look at the policy meeting of the committee is, can you take that, Mr. Sampson, because I guess I'm one of those.
Yeah, so I'll ask you and/or Ms. Van Kouch to chime in if I miss anything in summarizing some of the, because some of these overlap with the past two meetings, but we did meet on May 2nd. A few things, there was a lot of discussion over a change to 4219, which is commercial driver's license, controlled substance, alcohol use testing. So folks have a sense of scale, that was a 22-page policy. So to go through that and have some conversation around that, you know, some of the sort of basic mandatory revisions are around citing federal code for levels of what is or is not acceptable and timelines on when someone may have consumed alcohol and such, and obviously the threshold for a commercial driver's license is .4, not .04, not .08. So there was a lot of conversation around that, where we spent, we did a deep dive on some of the practices here in the district to make sure that we were fully compliant. We certainly are, but we had some deep conversation around there. An update to eligibility of residents and non-residents, this has to do with students that attend schools with F-1 visas. There's been federal change on what that looks like. We are not federally approved at this time, and the federal guidance has changed on that, mandating that districts collect tuition for that. At this point in time, we're opting not to participate in the F-1 student participation, student visitation. Some other things on unsafe school options, those are for districts that are deemed chronically unsafe, like the high degrees of violence in the schools. Not applicable to us, but it's a mandated policy that you have on your books. Substance abuse, Mr. Dillon said the change was from what was known as the Evers reporting to SSDS, which is just a change in what the state is calling it, you know, and that's really to just put the title in a more positive way. Some changes to student discipline in the code of conduct, which is things that we already had in our handbook and our policy, is that you might be denied participation in extracurricular events if you are punished in some way within the school system or disciplined in some manner. And then there's mandated policies around there from the state about removal of students for firearms. I sure hope so, but that is a mandated policy that districts have to have. And any assault of a district staff member, there's some mandated language around there. And then we had some conversation around a policy on removing students, some language concerns and questions that came up from the committee. And so what was done there is the committee linked definitions of the term removed to code, and Mark, you can chime in if I miss any of this, but the definition of suspension itself is not in policy or regulation. So we did include the definition of expulsion to cite to the existing code, so if anybody has any questions around that. And then some brief changes to memorials, which it seems that in the district, we fly flags at half-staff upon decree from the governor and the president. I believe the impetus to change this policy was that some school systems may have been flying the flag at half-staff for other decisions that were made at the local level. We don't follow that here. We follow the guidance of either the governor or the president only, which is something that we've always believed in, so it was just memorialized in that in policy.
If I can, I just want to add one thing, and I promised everybody that we would get out of here quickly, but I just want, please, everyone to know, I asked Mr. Sampson tonight in the executive session, how does New Jersey rate nationwide with public schools? And I know for myself that I moved from New York State to New Jersey for the school systems, and we're going to be facing some tremendous cutbacks, tremendous devastating cutbacks. Please, please, support the school systems. We're number two in the nation with what we do, and we cover everything, from disabled students, which absolutely need the assistance of school systems, to the high-end achievers, to the middle-of-the-road school systems. We can't go backwards with this. Support everything that we can to champion the funding of our school systems. It's so important. Mr. Sampson and I worked hours and hours on this behind the scenes, and I know he's adamant about it, he's passionate about it, he always brings it up, and so is every faculty member in the district here. With that said, let's move forward. And Sean, are there any changes to the agenda right now that you'd like to note?
Yes, there are two. If I could just start with turning it over to Mr. Sampson to amend the executive session resolution?
And the only items that were discussed initially, which was already listed on the agenda, was in item number seven, we're to discuss agency reference number 2019-2941 and box eight, we're to discuss personnel items as noted on the agenda.
Thank you. As far as the public agenda, some changes to existing resolutions. G1, approval of resignations listed is Holly Kearns listed as a bus driver, should be bus aide. On G5, approval of lunch duty copter appointments, would remove the name of Dominica Sia. Also, there was additional resolutions to be added to the agenda. Under G6, approval of honoraria to add Carissa Luden as the varsity cheerleading advisor at Marlboro High School, is an out-of-district person. Stipend is $5,005.37 as dictated by the collective bargaining agreement. Under 11, approval of substitute home construction personnel, Brian Malachewski, custodian, effective tomorrow, 5/21. And also, as Mr. Messinger referred to earlier, rejection of the bids for the HBC here at Manalapan Auditorium. There's a space holder under I-2 on the agenda that was made up of on Friday. To fill that in is on the little piece in the back of the room, this little piece in the back of the room. Whereas Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education received bids on May 16th prior to 10 o'clock AM available time for HBC at Manalapan High School. Whereas the bids proposed submitted are excessive as to price, and they substantially exceed the cost estimates for the area project, and therefore be resolved that Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education rejects the bids received and herewith authorizes the re-admission of the project, with modifications to the design, which we're hoping will bring us into where we needed to be financially on that. And finally, an addition, J-23, resolved by the Board of Education to approve the settlement agreement and generally release an agency reference number 2019-2948, and that is all that's rest.
Okay, thank you. And one thing I would be remiss, and he's going to get embarrassed, but I don't care. Jason Lynch is out there, he's supporting the community, and he's supporting the lacrosse players, and he supports everybody in education. And Jason, you're a principal in Olbridge. Okay, and thank you for all your service. And thanks to you all, all of the kids for coming out. Thanks to all of the kids for coming out. This means so much to me, and I know it means a lot to the community. This is what it's all about. Thank you, guys. Keeping with my promise to move things along, may I have, oh, public participation, my favorite portion of the meeting. There's nobody signed up to speak tonight on that, so am I missing something, Mr. Sampson? No, we're good to go. May I have a motion to approve items G1 through K4? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Voice?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Ms. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Ms. Van Caster?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Essentola?
Yes.
Old business. Are there any members wishing to discuss old business? See, none? Any members wishing to discuss new?
I have two quick items. While we have folks out here, you know, one of the other pieces that I would encourage everyone to take a deep dive into on our website is the referendum that will be put forth on Election Day this year. We have broken that out into three different questions, because there was some feedback the last time we went out from some very specific items, and we want to make sure that we give the community as wide a range of choices as possible. But these are, it's twenty million dollars of basic housekeeping items such as roofing and paving and HVAC, and upgrading some of the security features in all of the high schools. It's work that has to be done regardless, and if you factor in the need to spend twenty million dollars on necessary infrastructure on top of a twenty-five million dollar reduction, I think that becomes self-evident about what kind of position that puts us in. We're hoping to get a better turnout from our school community. It was a very low voter turnout the last time that it was put forth. We have a community of eleven thousand students, twenty-two to twenty-three thousand parents, and across the, and that's not even including the K-8 system, that's high school only. There were only about seven thousand total votes cast. And so when it's that low of a turnout, that shouldn't be determining what's going to happen to the future of the district. So I would just encourage the folks here to take a look on our website. Everything's there. It's explained in detail, and please reach out if you have any specific questions. My second point is I'd like to welcome the newest member to our administrative team, so Dr. Alicia Sasso. If you could stand up, Alicia. So, Dr. Sasso, the new principal of Field Township High School, beginning July first. She comes to us as a city principal at Quonic High School, with a number of years' experience there and a number of years' experience in both middle school and high school assistant principal, high school teacher, varsity coach, a very well-rounded background that we think will serve this district very well. Came out of a very grueling process, drove down to the central administration probably more times than I have in the past week, just to head down there and spent an awful lot of time with our administrative team through the process. We spent months on this. High school principalship is one of the most important things we do, and we take it very seriously. And Alicia, welcome to the Field Regional High School District.
Welcome from the Board of Education, too. We gotta keep that standard up. And one fast question, what did you coach, varsity level?
Field hockey.
Field hockey, okay. I can't play that song. Okay. Mr. Voice, who writes this crib sheet that I read from all the time, reminded me of something that was very important, that's of interest to the majority of the people in this room. And when I looked at all of the agenda items together, the field hockey approval is part of that, so sit tight.
Lacrosse. Lacrosse and other different sports.
Yeah, we got it. Lacrosse, okay. I almost had this. So that's going to be a part of it, and let's see where that goes. You know, we're all set with everything on that. And I appreciate your input on it. Okay. New business?
I just talked to a little guy.
You're talking to a little guy?
No, pardon.
It's not Jason. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Roll call, Sean?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Ms. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Ms. Van Caster?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Essentola?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Let's get free.